Right. I'm going to call to order the December first, twenty twenty one special meeting of the Tiff City Board of Education and we will start with the pledging allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Melanie. Do you want us to take the roll?
President Dunaway here.
Vice President Secor.
Here.
Corinne Dahl.
Here.
Joellen Heatherly.
Abstinent.
Abstinent.
Simon Patrick.
Here.
We have a forum.
Great, thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Dahl and Mrs. Secor. Any changes or anything? Really can't because it's a special meeting, so.
Something could be taken off, but.
Right, we can add. You can delete, but you can't, you can't add. Okay, great.
As far as discussion, who called the meeting?
I did.
And Mr. Stefanic added something. Go ahead, Melanie. Dahl?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Joelle. Okay, so right now we are going to adjourn to executive session for purposes authorized under Board of Education policy zero one six six and O R C one two one dot two two G one to consider the employment and or dismissal of a public employee or official. And the board is going to be inviting Helen Carroll into the meeting. Mr. Stefanic. Kim Hagan. Okay, and that'll be it. So executive session item G one is to consider the employment and or dismissal of a public employee or official, which is policy zero one six six O R C one two one dot two two G one. So just looking for a motion in a second to adjourn.
I'll move.
All second. Mrs. Dahl and Mrs. Dunaway.
Now do I, now Mrs. Heatherly is here and she can vote, is that correct?
Well, yeah, sure.
Because I just don't have her name in here, so I'm going to write it down.
Okay.
Okay. Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes. Motion carries. All of you did this in your office? Or either that or we'll have to move.
We can ask Mr. Mainz.
It is now five forty one, I'm going to declare us back into regular session. Moving on to item three A, new business, looking for a recommendation for termination of employment of a public employee. Need a first and a second.
I'll move.
I'll second. Moved by Mrs. Heatherly and seconded by Mrs. Dahl. Is there any discussion?
At this time, President, I need to read the full recommendation for termination of employment.
Thank you.
I'm recommending that the board approve a resolution to terminate the employment of custodian Wanda Starnar. Miss Starnar has history of performance failures that led to formal disciplinary action from two thousand seventeen to the present. Despite multiple verbal and written warnings, Miss Starnar failed to have sustained corrective measures to adjust her performance to a level that would support continued employment. Starnar received prior written notice of a pre-termination hearing that included allegations of misconduct and performance failures. She attended that hearing conducted by Dr. Lisa Tuttlehoff on November nineteenth, two thousand twenty one. At the hearing, Miss Warner was given a full and fair opportunity to defend or otherwise explain her conduct. As a result of the hearing, information provided by Miss Starnar, Dr. Tuttlehoff recommended that Miss Warner's employment be terminated. Miss Starnar was notified of this recommendation on November nineteenth, two thousand twenty one. I sent Miss Warner a letter on November twenty fourth, two thousand twenty one to inform her that I would be recommending termination of employment to the board at tonight's meeting. As a result of pre-termination hearing on November nineteenth, the following findings were made. Miss Starnar engaged in gross insubordination by using the girls locker room office to sort her personal items as well as her cleaning supplies, despite having been warned and or directed to discontinue doing so in two thousand seventeen, also on January twenty third, two thousand nineteen, and December eighth, two thousand twenty. After each warning, she temporarily complied with the administrative directive, but then continued to defy the reasonable directive from her supervisor. On December eighth, two thousand twenty, Miss Starnar was provided a final warning letter that cited numerous violations of performance expectations, including but not limited to failures to restock toilet paper soap dispensers and paper towels, clean toilets, both male and female, sweep the commons area, she left food on floors under the tables, sweep and clean the mezzanine bleachers of food wrappers and beverage bottles that were there for at least two days, clean the CPA, left trash on floors between those seats for at least two days, properly store the kivak machine and chemicals which were left in boys locker room rather than being stored in a designated safe location to prevent injury or incident to student athletes. These violations occurred during the time additional cleaning regulations were in place due to COVID nineteen pandemic. At that time, Miss Starnar was transferred to a different building and told that any future violations of her professional obligations would result in a termination. On October twenty ninth, two thousand twenty one, Miss Starnar attended a meeting to discuss repeated performance concerns following her transfer to LT Ball Intermediate School. Specifically, she was advised of concerns related to her failures again to fill paper towel holders and failures to appropriately clean restrooms and floor areas. In addition, concern was raised about bleach being left in toilet bowls and on countertops, which resulted in teacher complaints about stained clothing from the bleach. She was informed of teacher complaints, i.e. that teachers were cleaning their own classrooms due to her ineffective and inefficient performance of her custodial job duties. She was further informed that interruption of the work of others due to her constant and necessary conversations with other staff members was interfering with the operations of the district. When provided with a letter defining, excuse me, outlining those above concerns, she refused to acknowledge receipt of that letter with her signature. Following the meeting on October twenty ninth, Miss Starnar failed to timely report to work. At that time, she was aware of the serious performance concerns or considered as violations of the final warning letter provided to her on December eighth, two thousand twenty. On October twenty ninth, two thousand twenty one, at some point, after she reported to work approximately fifteen minutes late, she intentionally walked through the school building with mud on her feet, leaving muddy footprints on the floors. Impacted portions of the building included areas to which she was not even assigned. The Starnar's misconduct on October twenty ninth, walking through the school building without shoes and leaving the muddy footprints on the floors as referenced above, was discovered on November first, two thousand twenty one. There is video evidence to support the allegation. The video recording of Miss Starnar walking without shoes resulting in soil performance on the floors throughout the building shows that she entered into areas of school building where she was not assigned. Video footage from October twenty ninth, two thousand twenty one also indicated that the only cleaning task Miss Starnar performed that evening was emptying of trash cans. Miss Starnar failed to document time away from work, as is required of all employees, her absences on October twenty six, two thousand twenty one, and October twenty seventh, two thousand twenty one. And on November first, two thousand twenty one, Miss Starnar was provided with a letter informing her of alleged misconduct on October twenty ninth, two thousand twenty one, video evidence of this misconduct, and noted her failures to document access as required. At the pre-termination hearing, Miss Starnar provided insufficient information or evidence to refute any of the allegations. I believe the above list of performance failures represent violations of board policies forty one twenty point oh one, job descriptions, and forty two ten staff ethics, as well as multiple failures to perform the specific functions in her board adopted job description. Because Miss Starnar was given multiple opportunities to improve her performance without sustained corrective action by her, Dr. Tuttlehoff and I believe the termination of Miss Starnar's employment is warranted. On that basis, I request you approve a resolution for termination of Miss Starnar's employment. Revised Code, section thirty three nineteen point oh eight one provides authority for the board to terminate the employment of a non-teaching employee for violation of written rules and regulations. for violation of written rules and regulations of the Board of Education or for incompetency, inefficiency, dishonesty, drunkenness, immoral conduct, insubordination, discourteous treatment of public, neglect of duty, or any other acts of misfeasance, malfeasance, or nonfeasance. My recommendation is that Ms. Starner's employment be terminated based on incompetency, inefficiency, insubordination, neglect of duty, and malfeasance. Thank you.
So at this time, I would like to agree the official resolution. Resolution for termination of employment, RC three-three-one-nine dot zero-eight-one. The Board of Education of the Tipton City Exempt Village School District Miami County, Ohio, Board met in special session on the first day of December, two thousand twenty-one, with the following members present. Teresa Dunaway, Joelle and Heatherly, Corinne Dahl, Simon Patry, Anne Secor. The treasurer advised the board that the notice requirements of RC one-two-one dot two-two and the implementing rules adopted by the board pursuant thereto were complied with for the meeting. Ms. Heatherly moved the adoption of the following resolution. Whereas Ms. Wanda Starner, Ms. Starner, has been employed by the board as a custodian since June twenty-fifth, two thousand seven, and whereas Ms. Starner has failed to adequately perform the duties of her position despite multiple warnings and opportunities to improve her performance. And whereas, board based upon RC three-three-one-nine dot zero-eight-one, the board is authorized to terminate the employment of a non-teaching employee based upon violations of written rules and regulations as set forth by the Board of Education or for incompetency, inefficiency, dishonesty, drunkenness, immoral conduct, insubordination, discourteous treatment of the public, neglect of duty, or any other acts of misfeasance, malfeasance, or nonfeasance. And whereas Ms. Starner was provided with a pre-termination hearing, prior written notice of that hearing, prior written notice of the allegations against her, and a full and fair opportunity to defend or otherwise explain her actions. And whereas, following the pre-termination hearing, the superintendent has recommended the termination of Ms. Starner's employment. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Tipton City Exempt Village School District, County of Miami, State of Ohio, that, section one. The Board of Education of the Tipton City Exempt Village finds that the allegations of misconduct by Ms. Starner are substantiated based upon the recommendations for termination of Ms. Starner's employment. The Board of Education further finds there is just cause for termination based upon incompetency, inefficiency, insubordination, neglect of duty, and malfeasance as outlined in the superintendent's recommendation for termination. Section two, the Board of Education hereby terminates the employment of Ms. Starner effective on December second, two thousand twenty-one. Section three, it is found and determined that all formal actions of the board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of the board and that all deliberations of the board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were adopted in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including RC one-two-one dot two-two. Ms. Dahl seconded the motion that the above resolution be adopted. Upon roll call on the passage of the resolution, the vote was as follows. So are we ready for the vote? You've read everything that you have to read? Okay, so Melanie, we're ready for you to call the vote.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Patry?
Yes.
Secor?
Yes.
Motion carries. The foregoing is a true and correct excerpt from the minutes of the regular meeting held on the first day of December, two thousand twenty-one of the Tipton City Exempt Village School District Board of Education Miami County, Ohio, showing the passage of the resolution here and above set forth. And it will also be signed by Melanie Fox, Treasurer, Tipton City Exempt Village School District Miami County, Ohio. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to new business three B, IRS processes and revised payroll and donation procedures, looking for a motion and a second.
I'll move.
I'll second. Mrs. Dahl and Mrs. Dunaway. Is there any discussion?
Yes. We kind of talked about this some, the following, at the last meeting. I think the IRS, I mean, I don't know anybody, when given a letter from IRS doesn't, you know, their heart doesn't speed up a little bit. And it was included in the board docs, and I hope everybody took some time to really look over that and see what exactly is being addressed in this letter. My concern is that we always want to leave things better than when we found them. And the processes by which we hire people and by which we pay people have continued to not be improved and have continued to not be clearly and effectively communicated to people so that they understand. One of the things that I find interesting, I guess where I kind of want to start our conversation is where this IRS letter, how it came to be, and what is the process now of responding to it? Like, when did you get it? What have been the steps thus far?
So that would be Mr. Stupine.
Yeah, so we're kind of both on the same page, so. Of course, I came into the district on May seventeenth, working half-days with Mr. Stevens, so that was the first day as far as our timeline for me. However, when we backtrack to the date of the management letter, appears it was dated March twenty-nine. I'm understanding on April one, there was a form of conference to go over with the auditorium to go over this letter. Between April one and now, I was not aware of the letter until Capitol Conference weekend. And however, so what I've done, I reached out to prior treasurer to get a little bit of information and background. And the understanding that I'm gathering is that it, the letter, the twenty-nineteen audit that came in the mail in October, okay, and I'm kind of bouncing around, when I got that letter, it was not serious. We're going to how he thought, he thought it was more of a random type, the one I got, and I talked to Dave about both of these. Thought it was more or less guidance. So, and I know when you think IRS, like, oh my gosh, you know, I thought, what is this? But it's more or less like a random situation. So we didn't think it was serious, and I know the day that I opened the letter, I didn't call you guys that day because I thought, I kind of did my background, thought, well, maybe it's random. Of course, then we had the management letter too. So, of course, Mr. Stevens said, you know, it is just more of a guidance, I've addressed these items. He said that he made contact with those folks that it would affect those in the letter. We're looking at just these two groups, whether it be stagecrafters or athletics, they're mentioned in the letter, that he's taken the steps to make it right and correct, whatever it had been. Then we had COVID. So, March of twenty, everyone's lives changed. I'm understanding we didn't have the stagecrafters. And so, so I was told by the director that we didn't have stagecrafters, so I'm
No, the COVID summer.
Twenty-twenty.
After the closure of schools.
So this would have been, yeah, June of twenty. Twenty-one, we brought it back. And I'm then understanding we had some student volunteers and maybe a couple people that helped run the program. And I'm trying to get more information, since this all came about. Trying to reach out to the departments, and as far as my process is what I feel I need to be doing. Athletics, you know, this could be a band performance where we want to bring in somebody, it could be someone that comes in for one of our classes, like anything outside, but if you're, you know, we're understanding if you're helping students, you're servicing kids. We need to withhold tax, just like the teachers, you know, we're all around the kids, we're servicing the kids who need to have employment set up correctly, so. So I'm communicating that with everyone, you know, we're trying to, this office, we're trying to communicate that.
That is, yeah, in the management letter, it said you had to, we have to more clearly define employees and contract service providers. And so when we talk about withholding taxes in the office, that would be defining somebody as an employee. So, so what Melanie was saying, just to connect to that phrasing in the, in the letter. So when Melanie says anybody that works with students, they would be defined as an employee, and so they would go through the employee payroll system.
So, just, just because I think that there's going to continue to be a misunderstanding in the community, because we're going to have to send out ten ninety-nines, correct?
Well, what we're going to do is allow the IRS process to follow through. And what they are doing is basically looking to see who we paid and how we paid them, so.
So when the
And then they're going to tell us how to fix that, and I'm going to follow through and make sure.
So the auditors, the auditors' letter that we got on the twenty-ninth, when was this?
March.
March. March twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-one, so this past March, right? If you scroll down to the bottom of this letter, it says, as a directive, the district should consult with its legal counsel and the IRS to determine if such individuals should be considered employees or contractors, and then determine if Medicare, retirement, contact the IRS and the retirement system immediately to rectify, to rectify, it doesn't say immediately, to rectify the situation, issue W-tos to the applicable individuals for the years. This issue will be referred to the IRS. So in March of this year, when we received that letter, Mark, did any of that stuff take place? Did we reach out to our legal counsel? Did we reach out to the IRS?
Not out of my office, and I'm not sure if Dave reached out to legal counsel. And just to put another another, well, another framework on that. We didn't actually receive that draft until April the first. That's when we had the conference, I don't know if it was, I can't remember if it was a conference call or a Zoom meeting. And Dave was on that, I was on that, and at least two or three board members, I think, were there too. I don't think the whole board was there, but there were several on there. And that's why I think it was a conference call, I couldn't see all the faces and people, so I don't remember actually who was there. And as, as with anything financial, in my experience, it goes to the treasurer's office or the finance office to move it forward. And so I don't know if there was, if there was follow-up at that time.
So when you put somebody on a board doc for us to approve as employees, I'm just wondering how that gets crossed over, so you've asked us to approve them as employees,
Yes.
not as service providers.
Yes.
But somehow then it got in payroll switched from, I've asked the board to approve this person as an employee, but now they're going to get paid on a PO. Even though we don't have a service contract with them, we have an employment contract with them. That's correct, right? So people in the community feel that, and I've heard other people say it, well, it's only seven hundred dollars, or it's only six hundred dollars, they shouldn't have to pay taxes. But when you employ somebody, and they were put on the board docs to be employed, they should then go through employment for a lot of reasons.
Right.
But also because you've asked the board to employ them, not as a service, because we don't, I mean, if Ms. Haggen brings in somebody, a service contract to fix drinking fountains, that contract is generally for to approve, right? That is truly a PO, and we don't approve John Smith fixing a water fountain. We might approve a PO to
Certain amount.
Right, right.
If it's over twenty-five thousand dollars.
Because I still hear this, and I'm still having conversations with people about not understanding the difference and why this is such an important situation that we're talking about. We are employing people.
Right.
There should never be a PO written to somebody that we've employed.
Right, and that's, that's the part of the corrective action that's already in place, that we put that out there.
When did that corrective action take place?
So
This has been going on since April first.
And I'm understanding it's been going on
Well, it's been going on since
Since Joe Smith.
It's been going on the whole six years I've been here.
So, so, so Mr. Stevens explained to me that he kind of followed suit how things have been going on as a district until we got this piece of guidance.
So nobody had the
So past, so past April first.
Enrolled with it, not what had been doing, which
So the last time but so the last time, when you put somebody on the board for us to approve as employee, that was the last time, so April first, April seventh, we stopped writing POs to people that we had employed.
That is not what we discovered, but we, we stopped the PO processes that we have discovered.
Okay.
To my knowledge, you can, you can state to
So we stopped as of a month ago, probably?
So
Thirty days?
Yeah, because what came on my radar first was
We're not blaming you, this happened for you.
So coaching staff from fundraising or whatever we were listing on the agendas, and that I'm seeing the PO come over. So I was questioning, you know, a couple of them were in the pocket pay, and you know, it already, the coaches, the season was over, and I'm like, then you're talking about it, so we actually have a few of our approved individuals that I'm working on getting this corrected.
Okay.
That we didn't have payroll paperwork, and we did go back to Mr. Kramer and say, hey, we do need to make sure this is correct, and these were on athletic services. So because Ms. Kamszczynski and I have also tried to, we're trying to get this ball rolling, because before the next event occurs, and we've got helper one, two, three, and four running around the stage, and they're graduates of our school, I mean, you know, eighteen and older, whatever, we need to have payroll paperwork. It may not have been done.
Right.
And it should have been.
Right.
So, no, where it should, it was done and fast, because it's kind of, that was just how it was done here, and we're running into a few things that way and finding out it's not right, got to make a change, and, and we are implementing a change now, so.
Where's the evidence that the auditor's findings, and there's other findings in this auditor's report. Typically, when you have something that indicates either recommendations to improve processes or citations, typically, there's a response from the district that goes to the auditor with a plan of correction. Is there evidence that that plan of correction was ever submitted to the auditor?
I was under the impression that there was nothing that was requested by, by their office, and that this was
Right, these were
Addressed, and it's, it's I want to, I think of it as strict guidance, you know, you want to probably should go ahead and get these done ASAP, that's kind of how I read it.
So the answer is there is
So as far as a response from the district back to the auditor, I do not believe that was
Shouldn't there be?
I don't believe
Not, not, not off of a management letter, from my past experience. We had, and part of that call, and part of the reason why the management letter may have not have gotten the priority, you know, on this area, was that the audit was, was a clean audit. The audit was listed, and the focus of the meeting was almost congratsulatory on the actual audit. The management letter comes in as a guidance document, you know, like Melanie said, a strict guidance document, you know, on things that you should address, and
The recommendations about better practices to put in place.
Better practices.
Yes.
Right, correct. And there's four of them here, this is just one that you're referencing, correct?
Yes.
There are four things to be addressed, and part of the auditor's job is to identify better practices and safeguards to put in place that protect the district
Yes.
from this kind of situation from happening, so if there is nothing in place to address these things, I would recommend that we put something in place. And it sounds like what Corinne is mentioning is there is an absence of those procedures that have either been finalized or adopted by this board. And then taking that further would be, what steps then will the district take to To make sure that those procedures then are trained of employees and monitored, so that those practices stop moving forward. I think that that would satisfy not only the auditor, but would probably satisfy the IRS. Because these have not risen to the level of citation, these are recommendations.
Right.
The audit suggests that the district has sound practices, financial practices in place. But there are areas of improvement, you would expect that from any auditor.
Right, I, I would think that, you know, I mean, unless every district has a perfect A plus audit. You know, they may not get it, but I don't know how many districts do, you know.
I guess my concern would be that, you know, first of all, two board members brought this to the forefront, right? Doing our fiduciary responsibility, and we've mentioned several times about the whole. Coaches as, or the volunteers being approved as volunteers and then coming back months later. And, okay, now we want this person paid, and Mrs. Dahl and I brought this up, we discussed this multiple times on camera. And it keeps cropping up. So, you know, there's no reason for this to keep cropping up, I don't know how, it's been two years now. That we've been trying to take corrective action on this. I appreciate the fact that you're now correcting it, and we're not gonna do that anymore. But it shouldn't take two years and two board members being dragged through the mud constantly on social media. They're mean, they don't wanna, maybe, it's not that we're mean, I'm not mean, Mrs. Dahl's not mean. We're just trying to do things the appropriate and correct way, I don't know why that's so painful for some people to understand. So, we just, we have to just stop, start doing it, it, it sounds like you're heading in the right direction.
Once we, we'll go through the process with twenty nineteen, we'll find out if we've got any discrepancies. Then we're gonna hit on twenty twenty, and we're gonna have to see what we have. And my understanding is that as we go from nineteen to twenty one. That it is corrected, except we did have a couple athletic soccer deals that we're working on that. And we've already had lots of discussion about making this right, so. Um, I've not dealt with the stage crafters program, you know, staffing and all that, I don't know if COVID. How it was when I came in in June, July, you know? Cause then it must have been over and school started.
When is it reasonable to expect that we'll have something in place and what would then the date be that you fully have it trained? It seems like. Well, since the audit, audit that's gonna come up. And so, when is it reasonable to expect that something will be drafted, approved, and then implemented? And then that should satisfy the board that has been addressed. And it also satisfies and shows effort from the last audit to the next audit. That those recommendations have been applied.
I don't know if this is, when you say drafted, I don't know if that's um. Would you have this like a policy thing or, you know? Cause I'm only thinking of two individuals, and when you think of the departments in the district, we don't have a lot of. This is not going on, you know, the teachers, I mean, this is just really like, really like in athletics and your extracurriculars overall.
Great point, yeah.
So I, I don't have like ten departments and all these plans, I have pretty much two people that I'm talking to right now. That I think it's gonna clean up.
Okay.
And uh, I can address that with kind of a split answer. Um, we can create draft procedures to present to the board. I, but I won't be comfortable in finalizing them until we uh, get a final. Report from the IRS and make sure whatever we put in draft form addresses anything and everything that's in that. That final report from the IRS, then I think we can bring it forward as, here's our final recommendation of the procedures that'll take care of any of these past. Um, you know, uh, issues, so that they're not there moving forward. Uh, and, you know, just to speak to one piece, the, the piece about volunteers actually getting paid, we, we did address that. Um, uh, in, 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 in. Semi uh, uh, clean order last year, when we said anybody that's listed as a volunteer is gonna stay a volunteer. And anybody that had, you know, paid out of fundraising money up to, you know, a certain amount, that was a different category. We're not comfortable with that category either, uh, right now, and so we're, we're looking at the positions that are listed in the master agreement. Uh, and there are numbers next to those for maximums for those positions, and then the extra coaches are volunteers, period. Uh, and that, that makes it clean that it's the identified approved ones. Um, through um, the, the agreement between the T C A and the Board of Education, and then additional ones are voluntary.
So, um. I, I hear what Joelle was saying about we need a. Policy or a procedure, and it was done like this when I got here. Um. I, I personally don't know what other policy or procedure you do, you're hiring somebody.
Right.
How did they switch over to P O?
It's more of an IRS guideline, it, I mean, I, what I've been taught.
What?
The IRS kind of wants you to. As the treasurer or the superintendent or the, the central office, we're, we're looking at this person and saying. I mean, it's our duty to say, what are we gonna do?
We're supposed to make a determination whether they're gonna be independent contractor or an employee.
Right.
If we've, if we voted as a board that they are being hired on as an employee. Someone in the administration can then not unilaterally decide to treat them differently. What the management letter says is that. We were not clearly determining the distinction, or it wasn't clear to them in that, in that letter. Doesn't mean that we inappropriately designated somebody as an independent contractor or not. But at the end of the day, what we vote on, what we approve is what we voted and approved on, and so, and I believe. Since the year before last, that has not been something that's been occurring. I thought that that all been squared away, if it is still, if it is still occurring, then, you know. It sounds like you guys have an understanding of that, you're, you're fixing it. I don't know if we really need another policy, cause we already have policies in place that probably don't allow that to begin with. It's just, it's just. Well, I'm not, I'm not sure, uh, it, you know, new policy is out there, but the communication that has to go out is what past practices have to cease.
We can't keep doing it, to your point of, we're still doing it the way two treasurers ago did it, that, that doesn't fly anymore. So, we have, like I said earlier, we need to make a clean break, we need to start doing, now that you're fully aware of it, start doing it the correct way. And, you know, no more.
What we're thinking too is that the IRS letter is just asking for information, it's just, it's just a request for information, our, our appointment records, it's nothing. It's not like, it's not a determination that we've done something wrong. I think that that's, that's clear.
Quite that way, I think it's a determination that something needs to be corrected one way or the other.
It's a Form nine forty one.
There's an optional feeling here, I think that you go this direction or that direction. But I wanna thank Mrs. Dahl and Mrs. Dunaway for your diligence and staying on top of things like this. And I'd like to put it right out on the table, there was some indicators or some discussions. That sometimes the reason this sort of got vague in terms of taking taxation out was. Because it was advantageous for certain individuals.
And that was seven board meetings.
Yeah, it said.
We can't, we can't run a district like this.
Yeah, the exact sentence was, it's not worth taking taxes out of six hundred dollars.
It's got to stop. And I'll take the heat, which I am from the community. But this is best practice, and when you start it now, you, you cultivate a mindset that continues whether I'm here or not. And hopefully it will always continue and move forward. And it's no different, if we, if we expect more out of our students than our adults, we're in trouble. No, we really are.
Yeah.
And, you know. I like the way this all sort of starts to mushroom, and then when we get to this, to this, um. Really, what's going on, then I, it, it, there, there's a pattern here, it all gets sort of softened up and act like a. This was just an act of nature that, that came, came on us, no, it's not an act of nature. It's people not being dutiful and attentive and picking up the phone and asking questions. Just like we expect our students to communicate with their teachers if they're unclear of an assignment, they're unclear of the expectation. How is it so difficult for an adult to do that?
Great point.
I'm sorry, that, that was my concern too, because then we had other things like, um. Not fingerprinting that happened.
Yeah, that was a good one.
And because people weren't going, and then we said back in twenty nineteen.
It just layers and layers.
And part of the process was in twenty nineteen, we said, oh, we're gonna fix this. And you can't put people through payroll because they're, they're being employees, and then we didn't fix it. And then, it. It's not getting fixed, that is my concern, up to October of twenty twenty one. We still had people going through and getting a P O that was put on a board doc for us to approve as an employee. We had people that weren't employed, that were actively voted, know that they couldn't be employed, that were still allowed in the buildings. To work with our students and were then given funds that were crowd raised. Crowdfunded, how does that happen? How does that happen when we say, no, you can't work with our kids, but then now you're in there working with our kids and you're getting money and you're not paying taxes? We, we have a systemic problem of owning what's going wrong and making a corrective action.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I have to leave, um, again, when can we expect the procedures to be drafted and when is the date that it will be trained? So that it can be followed, so you can address these concerns.
Whatever you're needing, I mean, I, if it's the next board meeting, I can provide.
Together and decide and then tell us.
Well, I mean, sooner rather than later, I mean, you know, already done, so, you know.
Forgetting a, a written policy.
Yeah, not a.
There's already been, there's already been an instruction provided.
We don't need a.
To cease these practices, correct?
It's a process flow.
I'm with you, okay, so at least the practice has stopped now.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question, Mr. Stavodin, so, we, like, we don't need policy.
Right.
We have policies, the problem is, like, to Corinne's point, we're not following our policies, so I have a very simple question. So Carrie did this job uh, um, prior to Kristen coming, all right? So, the superintendent, Carrie, you know, she, she reports to you. Um, you know, each girl in the office has a certain little thing that they do, E M S, you know, new hire paperwork. So when Carrie did that job, which was, you know, background, B C I, volunteer.
Yeah.
Did, does Carrie have something written out, we don't need a policy, it's just an office procedure? That when Kristen took over the job, hey, Kristen, here's the, here's the procedure and the checklist on, you know, B C I, volunteer, da, da, da. Do you, do you guys have something like that in your office?
The transition did take place and yes, Kristen.
Okay, so that's what we need, right, that's what we need, okay.
Yes, and, and again, to this point, we are now working on. Past practice. Aligned or misaligned with policy, and so Melanie is addressing. Um, payroll things that past practices that didn't align with. Employment policies and procedures, and we're correcting those immediately, so. Month ago. Purchase orders, and correct me if I'm wrong, a month ago, purchase orders weren't being created, but over the summer. Purchase order processes may have been created uh, for the fall. And when Melanie started checking, those things were in place, and so she, she stopped. Anything that was purchase order based and now is putting it in, into an employment practice.
Purchase orders tend to go through a flow, so if I want a purchase order, I have to submit it to my. Um, administrator, the person above me, who then gets it approved, who then gets it approved, and then it ends up over in payroll.
Right.
So somebody was approving, paying athletics or paying stage crafters through a P O. Like, who, the, whoever supervisor is for that, was signing off and sending it over, so we have, a- again. We have a systemic problem where we don't understand what we allowed to, to pay for and what we're not allowed to pay for.
And those are the conversations that Melanie was just talking about, we have identified these supervisors. Thanks, Rick. We, we have identified the supervisors that, that we need to uh, communicate with to stop. The, the stipend, this. You know, we haven't found anything that there are any salary, um, uh, payroll issues, these are stipend type positions, advisor. Um, uh, coach type thing, and the ones that aren't in the negotiated agreement. And so we are addressing the supervisors that are in those programs to put a stop to this past practice.
So, and, so other, it's outside of athletic sentence, stipends are also going through P Os?
No, I was talking about, stage crafters was another co-curricular I was talking about.
Oh, okay.
So it was, it was stage crafters, some camp activities, and then. I think there are a, a, a few of those coaches that were in the. Paid out of fundraising, you know, instead of, you know, the, the chart that was in the, the master agreement. Some of those may have been in these categories, that's what we're checking out, we're going back and checking all of those.
So I, I prefer to have the positions in the master agreement.
Right.
Because they're, you know, they approve our jobs here, that's just how it is, so. They don't have program assistants in there. So we're trying to still decipher where, where did this program assistant position come from? Cause you want your jobs, the union is supposed to agree on your jobs, I don't care if it's a janitor. Right, I mean, they're agreed on it.
Yeah.
And they don't agree on, I mean, they don't have stage crafter, da, 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 so we, it's something we need to probably.
And bring to the light. Discuss that, because there was never a set. Staffing for stage crafters from one, from year one, two to three to four, it was always different titles, different people.
Right, different pay, yes, different pay.
And she actually, yeah, she thinks that there's two peo- two positions. That, you know, if we don't have these people, that there's just no program.
Right.
And these.
Are you talking about the head, cause it was, the two main positions used to make five hundred dollars, and then it got to be fifteen hundred. So those were the two, it was like director and co-director, and they each made fifteen hundred. And then I think everybody else was a, a true volunteer, where they.
Yeah, it was the program that we're gonna have. I think that.
Paid, and they were adult paid and the rest.
Just like no other, you know, any other club, you've got. Your stage crafter. I would think.
To me, best practice is not making it up as you go.
Oh, gosh, absolutely, right.
And this is what we have been able to identify on different areas in, in, in the district. We just sort of make it up as we go.
This program's been around for a long time.
I know some board members think that, you know, we're in sort of. Copacea here and that community values accept all this, I don't believe that. I believe community values are that we do need to have best practice, we do need to have consistency. And if we need, if we change something, then we change it uniformly and openly, and then consistently implement that change. Until it needs to be changed again. Um. I'm very encouraged and, and, and pleased that we're moving forward with these type of discussions. Helen, what's your, I'm sorry, and that we're not running away from it as a district. Because, you know, there is an expression, I love it, that's, that success is oftentimes the worst enemy of. Success because it breeds complacency and lack of humility. And I think when you get complacent and you lack that humility, you don't challenge yourself, you just, you try to convince yourself that you're in this great position. But by always pushing forward and questioning these things and having a very, you know, engaged leadership teams that want to make it better and. Are, are secure and having these discussions, I think is, is best practice. Helen, thank you all.
Helen, what's your comments on any of this, or your opinion, or anything we should, I mean, you've been listening, so.
Yes, I think it would have been helpful had um, anyone contacted us back in March. Uh, when you received the management letter, we, we did not get that contact. And maybe folks didn't think it was serious enough, but it, dealing with the IRS is, is extremely serious.
Yeah, very.
And the, my understanding is that. When you hired someone as an employee, you didn't take out taxes. When you identified someone as a contractor, you didn't give them a ten ninety nine. So the government is gonna be looking at both those areas for why didn't we receive tax money? So, we have financial attorneys. I'm not one of them, but I, I did share the management letter and the R E R S letter. With one of our financial attorneys, if you want advice on this going forward. I mean, all you have to do is ask us, we'll be glad to help you. Um, and I, I mean, you can use another firm if you want to, but we are ready, willing, and able to assist you. And I, I know that once the IRS gets. Starts taking a deep dive into the information Melanie has already provided, they're going to have questions. I, I pretty much assure you of that.
How many years they typically go back, you think they'll go back? How many years they typically go back? Do you think they'll go back three years, five years, seven years? What is, what's the norm on that?
Well, I I know they have authority to go back farther than this. They may not. But they may look at two thousand nineteen, then they're gonna look at twenty twenty, they're gonna look at twenty twenty one to make sure, you know, if if you have corrected all this, that that it's been done, that kind of thing, that'll probably help. But it's not going to prevent the possibility of penalties from back in two thousand nineteen and the tax liability falls on both the uh, the district for both the employee's tax and the employer's tax. So.
Oh, and then how does the um person that was crowdfunded, how does that filter into the I R S section?
I I can't tell you for sure. Uh, that could be an ethical concern for the who accepted. Or who gave the money. And anyone who is an employee of the board, whether they're approved as a volunteer or not, um, they have to abide by the ethics, the Ohio Code of Ethics. And you cannot accept compensation from anyone except the board. So it's, it it's it's a problem.
So what is, again, our job as a board is to protect the the schools and you know, all this stuff. Um, I I guess I'm concerned that we don't have an assigned lawyer for this, number one. I mean, I would definitely. I I don't, uh, do you need permission from us to get one or is that something they can go ahead and do? Because we absolutely need. I wouldn't go talk to the I R S without one and I don't even have anything that they can take, but like the school district and I think we we have to show that we're responsible. We have to show that we're good stewards because we're gonna have to ask people for money again.
And we wanna protect Melanie because she's new, this happened, you know, not under your watch. So I I definitely don't wanna set, send Melanie out to the wolves and say, he'll deal with this I R S thing and we're not gonna, you know, we, to your point, Ellen, this should have gone to her April first.
Right. So does this need to be another board action or does Melanie have, already have access to all of the help that she needs?
Well, I think the way this was structured early on, Mark or Melanie have the authority to contact us if they feel the need for legal advice. And on the financial side of things, I would refer this to Justin Markey in our office. He's wo- willing to do, you know, to assist you. And if you get to the point where you now have a contact back from the I R S and if it's anything other than have a nice day, I think you might wanna get in touch with me so that I can put you in touch with him.
So Melanie, do we have any corrective action that we've taken thus far or we're just?
We're just kinda waiting on the process.
So so we know now that they are a hundred percent gonna find something. You have to have, you you have to work with the lawyer. I don't even know how else to say.
Well, I, I mean, they may just direct me to get with Meta, issue some ten ninety nines.
I don't, I, I don't know. I don't think you should just wait and let the I R S just tell you what to do. I mean, I think you need a lawyer to work with you through this. I don't think it's just going, okay, well, the I R S said to do this. Okay, the I R S said do that.
Well, that's how they, I think that's how they're gonna initiate the corrective action is to tell me, you guys need to.
Helen, Helen, what do you advise?
You know, that kind of thing.
Would you ever do this uh like a, as a lone treasurer trying to navigate this?
The letter from the I R S specifically said, you're entitled to have a representative. I think you should have a representative.
Yeah.
Cause you are not an I R S agent. You don't know everything they're going to look for. Um, I don't think any school board treasurer would have the expertise to navigate an I R S investigation without some assistance. That's just my personal opinion. I wouldn't do it for my personal uh taxes.
Me either.
And I wouldn't recommend it for an entity with a budget like yours.
Right, great point. I'm just thinking in the audits that we've had over these years. Um, if this is the first time we've gotten this information, I I I am reluctant to think that it's a big amount of money that we're talking about because I think had it been, you know, and I don't know you know, up to fifty grand or up to, you know, when you're thinking big money, I don't know what.
That's the pro- that's my point.
What they do.
You don't know what you don't know.
Right. When I think five, ten, fifteen employees, five hundred, eight hundred bucks a pop. You know, I'm not thinking that we're thinking big hundred thousand dollar penalties for our district. I'm I'm just hoping if they find ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen people, five hundred, you know, thinking of the money. What we owe on our Medicare tax, you know, what the federal withholding could have been, had it been any federal withholding, you know. Well, if it's on a lower amount of check, how federal could have been.
I think the big thing is we don't know how many years are gonna go back. So if they go back two years or ten, like, think how long this program has been around. And so they've been, to your point, doing this since two treasurers ago. So that's ten employees times ten years, that's a hundred employees, you know, three thousand dollars were just the top two.
Now, she didn't mention that they would go back, however, they can go back. Now, she did, of course, say nineteen to the present, so I do know that's coming.
Right. And then I think the other thing too is that you're gonna have retirement systems involved. That'll be the next thing. I mean, the I R S is federal. Who knows if then the state's gonna come knocking? I think that you you have to.
I have to go.
Yeah, bye. You have to. I mean, I think that you, since you don't know, you have to, you have to work with somebody who does it. And you, this is not, uh, this is not a lone, you you can't do this by yourself.
So so Helen, so Helen, we could, we could utilize uh him for consult and then, you know, see what the, what the I R S comes back with after they review our documents and then see exactly what role he plays in the whole process, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Once we hear from the, yeah, once we hear from them, and I know, then we're definitely reaching out to someone.
Well, don't you think though that somebody should see what they're, I mean, cause at that point, the I R S is gonna say, okay, I wanna hear from you in such and such amount of time. I I don't, I I don't think there's any reason to wait to.
Well, they have everything that they request it. I'm just waiting to hear back with what they're gonna tell us that we need to do as a district.
So why, I I I don't understand why you would wait to seek legal help on this, Melanie, I really don't.
Well, I don't know really how to fix it.
Right.
I'd have to appease them, I would think.
We can, we can utilize, we we can, we can contact um the 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 tax attorney at at Rensselaar and we can share. Where you're at. Shared with the, with the I R S. He's already got the the management letter and the and the the letter request for information from the I R S. We can share the the other documents and we can have like a conference call and talk about his thoughts about uh what we need to.
Yeah, cause I mean, you know, living with Meta and printing ten ninety nines for individuals. I mean, I just haven't taken upon myself to say, let's just go ahead and get the seventy nine down. If they made over the six hundred dollar mark, you know, I I just kinda wanted to have.
Melanie.
Tell me, this is what we need, you know.
Making an uninformed decision about who should be under the employee tax system for withholding and who is an independent contractor. That is a very complex legal question. It's not something I think you can do lightly. Um, and, you know, I think you should only make that determination with legal.
Because that's how this whole thing started because when um we voted no on Jo Ellen's daughter. Then Dave Stevens said, well, I don't even know why it was on the school board. Um, we pay them with P Os, so you guys don't even have to vote on it.
Right.
And then that's when we said, well, no, we have to vote on it because they're working with students. If we don't vote on it, they can't work directly with students. And he said, oh, but they make six hundred dollars or less, so then we don't, you guys don't have to. He, and that's what started all this because he didn't have a clear understanding. He didn't understand. Started and continued those bad practices. I mean, I just can't stress enough, you need to get with that lawyer yesterday. Share what's going on because that's another thing too. It's not about six hundred dollars. It's about, they were on the board docs as employees. Now you don't go, oh, well, how much are we gonna pay them? Okay, now they're P O. No, that's not. We employed them. They have to stay in that employment lane. And that's where Dave was really, really wrong because then that's why they weren't getting fingerprinted. And it's those, you know, one little single misconception then grew a tree that we're still trying to chop down because we haven't got to the root of it.
Well, or what's worse, so you're not gonna get hired, but oh, now we're gonna crowdfund for you because the mean board wouldn't approve you. I mean, what, what kinda, what kinda best practice is that? It's it's, it's terrible. And keep in mind, they're not background checked and they're working with students for two weeks, ten days.
Yeah, they they don't seem to think that they, and I don't know where we need to have a policy.
Well, I'll take this back, yeah, I'll take this back to Mr. Stefanic.
And if they need background check, they're like, they don't even know, I mean.
Right. And and this started in twenty nineteen, so that like, that is the perfect example of why we have to have this conversation and have a really good plan. Cause back in twenty nineteen, we said.
This started because we weren't background checking band camp volunteers who were going to camp.
Anybody working around.
Corinne and I took it to the next level with the stage crafters.
They are now.
But Mr. Stefanic, I just wanna be clear on this because do you have something in place? A manual, a book, a checklist, something that Carrie had, that Kristen now has, or you? Okay, Mrs. Dunaway, she's going to the D C trip, A, B, C, D, and E. Check, check, check. You're telling me that you have that?
I'm telling you, the information was passed down. I haven't seen a a whole like operations manual.
We don't need a, we don't need a, we don't need a manual.
Policy.
We just need.
Background checklist.
The background, the background.
What I'm saying is that passing down information, Mark, clearly doesn't work.
It has to be written out. It has to be very, you know, like your kids. It's like your kids. You wake up, you brush your teeth, you make your bed. It has to be, you're a volunteer. Here's the six things we need. You're a contractor. Here's the six things. This is, it's to keep students safe.
Right, right.
End of the day, students first.
What I'm saying is I know that there are background check procedures in place, um, and there there are two. Um, there are two methods to do background checks. There's one off of um driver's license I D, I believe, and the other one is off of fingerprints, uh, and.
Sometimes it's both.
Right.
And sometimes it's both. Stage crafters goes now, anybody walking in.
Whether they're volunteer staff, they they go through a background check procedure. Uh, I will check on, uh, how much is written out and what the final looks like on on operations procedures at the.
Prior to these right here, yeah, okay. So the problem, the problem is too is that, like, just like you said, prior to these two right here.
Prior to us getting.
But I don't, I don't wanna be the reason why.
I know, it's just be done.
When you come into an organization and they're cutting P Os for people that are on board docs to be approved. You you don't need any board action to stop that. That's you going, hey, guys, I've been doing this for a while. If somebody's board approved as an employee, they stay in the employment lane. We don't cut P Os. And and I really get, um, I I think after hearing this for four years, I'm sure six years. And that's the way it was when I got here.
Yeah, I'm so sick of that. That, that and while we had COVID, I'm done with the COVID excuse and I'm done with, that's the traditional way we throw that out the window. Just do your job the right way and we're not gonna make excuses.
Right.
My, my history as far as the contractor employee piece. Um, the professional development that I have attended over the last twelve years, I've been doing this stuff. They always hit on that, on some of them. And this is let's see, oh eight, I started doing this and I never, then I was talking about contractors and trying, you know, cause that was something. Payroll or accounts payable. I mean, we worked together in there and we we had that come up at Northridge. I always bring up that's my history. We got into this discussion about athletics. You can't have any ticket takers. Uh, any of those guys that work for games, they have to go to payroll, even if they work a full-time job down the road. They come here at night, work the games. It's not a P O, it's payroll. So that was a big thing. So that's where I started learning about this. When I came here and started seeing, you know, paid by fundraising or whatever. And it was a P O.
Seems weird, yeah, seems weird.
So, well, this is how we've been doing it for so long. So then it's like, well, no.
So just so you know, do what you're, do what you know is right.
So I see that piece, right? I know that what we need to be doing. However, as far as seeing like a manual or there is lack of that around here.
I'm only talking about the manuals, yeah, I'm only talking about the background checking.
But even in the county, you know, there's, I don't know, somehow we don't have a lot of checks and balance. Checklists. I mean, we get our guidelines and sometimes year after year, they just, they make changes to our
Yeah, so.
Our procedures.
So our, so our next step is we'll make contact uh with with the tax attorney. We will.
Thank you for that, Helen.
We will tell, share, we will share what we have shared information from the request from the I R S. And we'll also go through the steps that are already being taken to align um, the the payroll practices with policy. And then we will create a list of um past practices that are going to cease and then we will meet with the appropriate supervisors in any of these areas to make sure that everybody knows. You don't refer to, you know, what 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 you've been doing as as like a reflex action. This is the new thing that's in place going forward. Then as we get more information from the I R S, we'll continue to use um the tax attorney as a, as a consultant and work that process through.
Right.
So two quick things. Helen, do you have anything else to add to the conversation about P Os, background checking on all this kind of in general?
Well, and just as a general comment, I could fill your boardroom with cases where the the issue is, is this person an employee or an independent contractor? So litigation on that is legion. And so if you're going to try or consider identifying an individual as an independent contractor, I would get legal advice before doing that.
Thank you.
Someone's an employee, you, you, I don't think you're gonna go wrong on that. If you've got somebody who's regularly working in the school district.
I I mean, I guess while I have you here, my question is, what if we have a musician that comes in and plays
Piano.
The trombone or the piano for our play. And when, and she doesn't say bill to the kids.
That came up in stage crafters too.
And then they get up when it's over, they take their bow and they hit, hit the parking lot. That's a contractor, right? That's, that's how I see it. They're not involving with the kids, they're not sitting down with the kids, we're not reading lines and singing together, we're doing her thing, she's out the door. I see that as a contractor and we have this um, hot item right now for our next.
So what's your take on that, Helen? Because we do have that come up with our musicals and it does come up with stage crafters as well.
That is a question, I think, I think that would be an independent contractor, but then there would be a contract. You don't have a contract.
Yes, we never have the contracts.
Well, there would have, yeah, you think you'd wanna have something for a set event and.
You know, what's the compensation and when are the performances? You know, it doesn't have to be a contract that's multi-page. It can be a very simple contract. But that would be another good question for Justin.
Right. Instead of hypotheticals now, let's, 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 let's look at, you know, what what Justin can tell us. And then we look at it and I think with what Helen said, Melanie and I have had some of those similar conversations that that basically we say, you're you're an employee unless there's a review done, you know, to determine that somebody truly is an outside contractor. And so somebody doesn't come to us and say, you're, I'm an outside contractor, we make that determination.
I've always.
Determination, it's an employee.
It seems always in the past for me, when I've seen it, it's pretty cut and dry.
Helen, I have.
You're painting walls or you're kicking footballs. I mean, you know, you're with the kids or you're in the maintenance world or food, so you know, you're kind of, it's, it's so, but I I definitely wanna use the legal advice. I'm not gonna not do that for any reason. I'm just also trying to think about my experiences, that's all.
Helen, I have a.
Using them, so.
I have another important question. I'm going to the resolution that we read the the very beginning of the meeting after Mark read his um, little piece.
Yes.
Now that, because we do have three board members here, so it's still a quorum. Do we need to change or fix that first line? Cause we still have three people here.
I think we make a technical colle- correction and I'll send that to Melanie. Uh, she was employed initially uh by the district in two thousand and seven and I think that's all it needs to say.
Okay, thank you. So we don't need to re-vote or re?
I don't think, I don't think that's serious. It's just a technical correction.
Okay, thank you. All right. I just wanted to get that while we're all still here in the room.
I have a a question on the auditor's letter. Um, the non-compliance findings on number two regarding the credit card account. Has that been resolved?
So I, in reading that, it looks like maybe there's some policy discussion. So I, in reading that, it looks like maybe there's some policy discussion. Um, from what I understand. That either the treasurer can house all the credit cards in my office and approve them to be used. Or. We have the staff, you know, principals, those that use the credit cards, they keep them. I still, Mark and I would approve the expenses on the card. But then we would assign a different person in the office. As a non-compliance officer, which is someone that does not approve the expenditures. And does not have a card at hand. So my thought was the accounts payable gal, her name is Wendy Kubler. That I would have her the person to at least contact credit card, you know, regarding payments, any issues with the card. Um, and then I actually have a card, Mark has a card.
All the principals do, yeah.
Instead of them all being like locked in my office and we have a sign-out policy, I mean. So some of it is policy, it's how we want to do that. And I know we have a policy thing coming up or whatever, but. Other than that, we're doing it correctly.
So as as of present, we do not have a credit card compliance officer designated through the district, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so perhaps it's something that we need to.
Yeah, she suggested Wendy, I think Wendy's right it in.
She's addressing that, then we would just have to revise the policy and approve that.
Okay.
For her being that, and and sometimes with those, you you don't necessarily put the person's name in the policy that's there now. But you put the position, and so the the position is there and then if people move in the payroll.
Yeah, you're legit.
Associated with that position and the policy is good.
So since so many administrators have a credit card, just for their, for their individual use. How is one monitoring or who's the authoritative source?
Same person, which is Wendy, because every time we get a statement. We are requesting, you know, all of your documentation, which would be your itemization, receipts, everything. Um, she goes through them and matches up like the purchase order. Gets with the secretary and makes sure that she's got everything we need before we make the payment.
Okay.
So she's always assigned to do that. You know, so she would be the person, I mean.
Okay.
I think.
Monitor compliance, yeah.
Okay.
She she does the job now, she just hasn't been officially designated as that.
Right. Yeah, as a final, from my perspective again, I want to thank um. Two board members especially for having such a conscientious, you know. Dedication to to doing things correctly. And I hope the public, if somebody's listening now, will 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 have some greater appreciation. For the oversight that you you're strapped with or that you should be having as a board member. And really some appreciation for those board members who who speak up on the oversight and the need and. Rightly or wrongly, take a lot of heat from the public who don't really understand a lot of the business matters that are going on here.
How many hate letters can we get emails? Oh, my gosh, like a dozen? We got a lot.
This is so sad, and I mean.
Two dozen?
If we can, if we can all work together.
Yeah, a lot.
If we can work together to try and be more supportive. And understanding that that this is all for a bigger cause for everyone. Uh, I I think we're just hitting the tip of the iceberg in terms of what real excellence is.
Well, it's not a destination, it's a journey.
And we're on a long journey.
Right.
Anything else?
I thank you guys too for bringing it up.
Yeah, and you've got to, you've got to contact Justin, you've got to get with him.
Yeah.
I hope you can have the confidence in me to to get it done. Whatever benchmarks we need to set are dates.
I have a lot of confidence.
We're, Mark and I together are going to make sure.
Can I tell you something, Melanie?
Right, well, you don't have to do it yourself, nobody is expecting it.
Exactly.
The best way to handle it is to go get with Justin. Get it, he, yeah. Helen, how many schools even deal with this? How many schools get IRS? Things, and how long is this going to take? Like, is this just like a ninety day and we're done, or is this going to be like?
I I honestly can't tell you because in the forty years that Fred and I've been doing this. This is the first one.
Melanie, you don't, you cannot do this by yourself.
I did not think you were going to say that, I thought you were going to say, oh, it happens all the time and there's lots, I really.
Maybe it happens in other places, but it's not happening.
The reason a lot of.
Hey, Helen, only in Tim City, only in Tim City, honey, come on.
That's why I don't want you to feel like for them.
You're saying you fix it.
But the names come across my desk and I see those POs, I mean.
Well, that, that you have to stop, but I mean, as far as the IRS letter, it is your job to make sure that it gets addressed. Through tapping into your resources, not going, okay, now Melanie's going to have to give up twenty nights in a row, so I can do this. Like, that is not anybody's, I I I'm speaking for myself, that is not my expectation. My expectation is that you go, okay.
Go to the experts, that's why we have experts.
Right, yes, yeah.
So, Mrs. Fox.
We're here to help.
I I would like to say, and from my conclusion here, from my perspective, thank you for your eye on catching things. And I I really, this is one of the things that I find very beneficial when there is a change in administration.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't fear administration changes, I've I've, you know, been indoctrinated with for for almost two decades. Uh, and there are benefits, great benefits that come out.
Fresh eyes.
Fresh eyes, um, fresh awareness, fresh commitment, so thank you very much.
I think that's so huge, because before we were just battling trying to acknowledge that things needed to change.
Yeah.
And now we're not, we're just going, yeah, things need to change, how we can do that.
Right.
That's a huge, that's a, that's a huge shift in in game.
And also thanks to Mr. Stefanic, because that 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 changing at the helm can be very.
Yes.
Very impactful.
I think this just really was, you know, some lack of communication. Timing.
Lack of communication, two years worse.
I would say, I would say it's the management letter, but I'm thinking of.
I think it's the one reflection of May culture.
I think, you know, and I don't want to speak for anyone, but you know, when you transition a job, you have. A future on your mind and how are you going to move your past, or maybe it just, you know. All right, we're going to make it better, we're going to get through it.
Call Justin. Call Justin.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Helen.
Thank you, Helen.
Have a great evening.
Bye, Helen.
Hey.
We'll be in touch.
Okay, the next regular board meeting will take place on Monday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at the Board of Education office, beginning at six PM. Looking for a motion and a second to adjourn.
I'll move second.
Mrs. Dahl and Mrs. Zikkor. Whenever you ready, luckily we saw the quorum, what if we didn't have a quorum, we'd sit here all night. That's true, wouldn't that be something?
Just keep the camera on the flag, just keep the camera on the flag.
Think about that, though, that's kind of crazy. We have a quorum, so we're out of here, my gosh, go ahead, Melanie.
Dahl?
Yes.
Zikkor?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Honestly, though, think about that, if you don't have a quorum, if people have to.
It's been all night, girl.